Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It is kind of a rainy, dreary day, but we're gonna try that one more time. Good morning.
Good morning.
That's better, that's better. Welcome to the South Carolina Department of Insurance. Today is Thursday, February the 6th, and the reason we're here today is to consider a pending rate increase for long-term care insurance products of the Prudential Insurance Company of America. This is, we had another hearing yesterday. This is our third in this series of hearings. And here at the Department of Insurance, we exist for the main purpose of protecting our consumers. We are the consumer advocate for the insurance sector in this state, and we protect our consumers in three different ways. One is look at rate hearings like this for rate filings. Two is we have an entire unit dedicated to serving our consumers, answering their questions on insurance. Our Consumer Services Unit, they answer questions, they help when there's a complaint against an insurance company, and anything related to insurance industry, we have an answer for. And third is to make sure that our consumers in this state have competitive insurance markets, that they can buy products. It is, we are a pretty environmentally rich insurance state. I mean, we appreciate the companies that do business here. We make sure that they are solvent, we make sure they treat our customers, our consumers, correctly. And so that's part of what we do, but here lately, I've been getting a number of calls, and to a number of you here in this room, we've had conversations about long-term care insurance and the rising cost of long-term care insurance. It is, without a doubt, the number-one issue at our department in trying to contain and manage rates in the long-term care space. I will also tell you quickly that it is probably the number-one issue in every state in the country with a regulator like myself. We have a national organization that meets from time to time, and we discuss this issue. And we have an executive-level task force that is looking at long-term care issues, whether it's uniform rates, how they treat customers, how they look at reserves, anything to do with long-term care insurance. Right now, this National Association of Insurance Commissioners is looking at it, because it's that big of an issue countrywide. And so when I talk to consumers, I hear that they're struggling. I'm a consumer of this product as well. I'm experiencing the same increases that everybody in this state is that has this product. My wife will remind me, or ask me, "What is it you do for a living? And why are my rates going up?" I don't have a good answer for her either. So we're here this morning to discuss the Prudential filing. Some of you will recall that in July of 2018, we had a public hearing on this subject, but it wasn't on any one particular company. It was the first opportunity we had to get companies together, insurers together, and have a discussion, probably a couple of hours' worth, and that's still on our website, and it's been viewed by over 200 people to date. But that hearing was just really a starting point. I would ask our staff when a filing would come in, I would say, "Why don't we hold a rate hearing?" And they were quick to say, "Well, Director, you don't have that authority to hold a rate hearing on long-term care insurance." So I went to the legislature this time last year and asked them for that authority, and obviously, it was granted. They have now given us the authority to hold these hearings, and so the process has been. A company comes in, makes a rate filing, we look at it, and we make a decision. If the company takes exception to that decision, our decision, they would appeal it to, or can appeal it to, administrative law court here. Company comes in, makes their case before the administrative law judge, ALJ. We come in, and we do the same thing. Nowhere in that process was a consumer's voice heard. So that's why we asked the legislature for authority to hold these hearings. Like I said, this is our third such hearing, and we'll continue to hold them on rate filings as needed. It is an important opportunity for consumers to make their voice known. You're the ones, we're the ones paying the bill, and they keep rising, and they're really not good answers. So we thought it was crucial to hold a hearing on this company and this filing. Prudential's the third-largest writer of long-term care insurance in this state, and they have about 9% of the market here in South Carolina. So we'll be discussing seven blocks of, closed blocks of business. That means there have been seven rate filings, each one of you fit in one block of business or the other. Four of those were issued to individuals between 2000 and 2012. Three were issued to groups, including state employees, between '98 and 2013. The state employee coverage was originally underwritten by Aetna, and then those certificate holders were given the option to move to Prudential in 2019, and obviously, many of you did. So when we get a filing in the office now, we have our own process. We have our assistant actuary take a look at it, go through her process. It's then referred to our own staff actuary, he does the same thing. And then just to make sure that we haven't missed anything, we're dotting all the i's, crossing the t's. We have contracted out with an external actuary, someone outside of this office, independent, to take a look at the filings. That firm is Lewis &amp; Ellis, and they're represented here this morning by Dave Dillon. Dave will make a presentation, so we'll all see, you know, his and his team's take on the filing. Then we'll hear from our consumers, and that is your opportunity to speak. Low profile, no pressure, your opportunity to speak. And then we have kind of the luxury in this state of having a different perspective from the consumer, to look at the filing, be with us this morning. Becky Dover of the Consumer Advocates Office, that office looks at a number of other, in addition to insurance, a number of other areas of our life here in South Carolina, from utilities to everything else that you could imagine. They do a great job. So Becky will have an opportunity to ask the company some questions. And this morning, we have Keith Burns and Mike McCann with us from Prudential, and then they will come up, and it'll be their turn to explain their rate increases and their processes that they followed and the reasons thereof. I will tell you that Dave Dillon will have some slides, Prudential will have some slides. You'll see them up here on the screen, but by the time you get back home to your computer or you look at it on your phone, they're already up. Go to our website, doi.sc.gov, and you'll see instructions to get access to every slide that's here. So look at them here, but don't worry. If you think you might have missed something, you can go back and look at them from that point. So I think I've covered all the basics. You know, we have probably six or seven consumers that want to speak. Most of them are here in person. We will have one letter that will be read into the record. You do need to know that this proceeding is being recorded in two ways. One, our court reporter here is taking down every word, just in case there's an appeal later on, it will be transcribed at that point, we'll have it for the record. We also have a video going. It's not live streamed, we don't have that capability just yet. We will soon, we don't just yet, but it will be posted on our website probably within a week after the hearing, so you can go back and review the tape at that point. So let's get started. Dave, come and share with us your team's perspective on the rate filing. Thank you. And when you come up to the podium, make sure you tell us your name, your full name, well, first and last name, and where you're from, so the reporter can get it down.
Good morning. Thank you, Director. As Director Farmer said, my name is Dave Dillon. I am Senior Vice President and Principal at Lewis &amp; Ellis in the Dallas office. My main role, so I've been at L&amp;E 21 years, and my main role the last few years has been essentially a regulating actuary. So I assist states that may not have a whole lot of actuaries or don't have an actuary, and I assist them in rate reviews, solvency exams, and things like that. Currently, my staff assists 14 states with rate reviews, so we're very familiar with the issues at hand. And the process we use here, as Director Farmer alluded to, is maybe a little different than what we do in some other states. It's definitely a partnership here. So some states, you know, they just hand over the filing, and we do the whole review, and we sign off on the review, we sign off on the rate increase, things like that. It's not how it works here. So it's definitely, as Director Farmer mentioned, the staff here reviews the filing. We review the filing at the same time. We make our own notes, make our own kind of draft objection questions. We then communicate with the staff on the questions that are submitted to the company. And then at the end, we make a recommendation to the director. We are not the final say. He reviews all these observations, we'll talk about, and we'll talk about what his kind of authority is and what he has to rely on, but that's kind of the process we do. So the stuff we're gonna talk about today, we're not at the point where we have made any official recommendation yet. These are really just observations we have made to this point. So after this hearing, Director Farmer and other staff will get with, and then Director Farmer will make his final decision on what the rate increase will be. Just a very quick overview of these requests. You know, so I had the challenge of summarizing hundreds of, almost thousands of documents that we reviewed for these filings into about 10 slides. So obviously, this is very simplistic and just a very high-level overview. There are seven products in this filing, there's three group, and you will see the middle one, the GLTC III, is by far the one that is most applicable to the most South Carolinians. It's over 7,000 policyholders, but it does include this, this filing does include the other products. So obviously, right now, so the GLTC III is a 19% rate increase, and I'll have some slides, a little more detail on each of the individual blocks here in a minute. But here are the rate increases, the GLTC II is over 100%, the III is 19%, and the GLTC IV is 10%. One thing I do want to point out here is that these policies were sold, you know, up through 2013, and that is a consideration we'll talk about in a minute. And then here are the, up come four individual policy blocks. One of my ILTC III is split into two sub-blocks, one pre-2012 and one post-2012, and that's kind of the, kind of the rules behind long-term care insurance kind of changed around then, and that's the reason for the split there. Again, as I said, there's not, not as many policyholders on the individual block for Prudential here, but obviously, for the people that have these policies, these rate increases are very important. And you can tell these are older, generally speaking, these policies have been around longer, and they stopped selling them earlier around 2003, 2005, for the first two generations. Another thing to point out here is the rate increase does vary dramatically, and it does depend on how long your benefit period is, do you have inflation protection or not. So that's why the rate increase varies so much. It really depends on kind of what benefit package a consumer purchased. Okay, so just kind of a broad overview of kind of how we do our review. So I kind of told you, you know, that we work in partnership, we have a couple people on my staff, that we have one person that's a primary reviewer, then we have someone that is a peer reviewer, and then I review all of the filings as well, just for consistency with nationwide issues, things like that. But we are kind of, we are governed by really two overriding things. One is actuarial standards of practice, okay? As an actuary, that's kind of the individual governance issues that I have, okay? And I've just pulled that way of actuarial standards of practice number eight, and that is the one on rate review and rate filings. So anyone that submits a rate filing needs to follow some guidance in here, and as a rate reviewer, I must follow those as well. And I've pulled out just a few issues here that I think are the key ones, you know, for this rate review, is really, there's two sections, one on regulatory benchmarks and one of reasonableness of assumptions. The regulatory benchmark really are the key definitions in a rate review. That's where we determine if things are adequate, the rates are adequate, if they're inadequate, if they're excessive, not excessive. Rates are not unfairly discriminatory. That's one that may not be as common, you know, not as clear as excessive or adequate to someone that hasn't seen a filing before, but unfairly discriminatory basically gets at if someone, if two people are very similar, you know, age, gender, are their rate increases similar and appropriate, right? So one, as I mentioned, there's a lot of rating cells here in these filings where the rate increases are different, or some of them, they're flat, especially on the group policy. So we review to make sure if that is reasonable or not. So that's where unfairly discriminatory comes in. We, of course, look at the loss ratio, where appropriate, loss ratio basically is just looking at how much per dollar percentage of that goes to claims. And then the reasonableness of assumptions, the actuarial standards of practice has the language that, you know, the assumptions used should be reasonable in the aggregate and for each assumption individually. Now we'll go into the South Carolina Code of Laws. So when we review a filing, actuarial standards of practice, I told you, there's two main things, the ASOPs and the laws. Well, the ASOPs say if laws, if the state laws say, well, that overrides. And in South Carolina, there are a few differences. As I'm highlighting here, there's a lot of similarities as well, but South Carolina has some additional points of review that we must take into consideration, and Director Farmer needs to take into consideration when he makes his final call on the rate increases. As you can see here, so there's a kind of two sets of six in the state law of kind of factors that Director Farmer must utilize and consider. The first set of four you can see are very similar to what I mentioned in the actuarial standards of practice. He can, you know, looks at the adequacy of the rates, if they're unfairly discriminatory, are they excessive? So very similar to that language in the actuarial standards of practice. And then the two of the criteria do relate to the reasonableness of assumptions. Are they, you know, are they unreasonable in the aggregate, or is there an individual assumption that is unreasonable? And then I said there was kind of a second set of six. So this is where South Carolina law has a little bit different from the actuarial standards of practice. This is very common, a lot of states have their own different review bullets. So Director Farmer can, you know, take these factors into consideration as well, past and prospective loss experience in and outside the state, underwriting practice and judgment, reasonable margin for reserve needs, expenses, prior approved rate changes, he can take that into consideration, and any other relevant factors. So some specific filing observations. You know, I mentioned that on the group, on one of the prior slides, that they stopped writing business in 2013-ish. Two of these blocks have not had rate increase requests yet, so it's been six to seven years since the company has decided to close the blocks, and they have not asked for rate increases to date. That is an observation that, you know, and that is one of the concerns that a lot of states have with a lot of long-term care filings, is, you know, carriers requesting increases when they need them. Obviously, you know, when a, when a block is closed, there's a reason for that, and there has been some delay in asking for the increases here. I will back up a little bit, though, and also say that, you know, these are observations. One is not necessarily more important than another one. So Director Farmer, you know, there may be one issue that he thinks is more important than another one, but so we're just gonna present all of these observations to Director Farmer, and he can take those into consideration how he sees. For GLTC III, which is just as a reminder, was the big one, right? There had been in 2015, a 40% increase request. At that time, 20% was approved. The company came back and wanted kind of the remaining piece of that, so the remaining 16.7%. This is just a note, is multiplicative, so 20 plus 16.7 is 40, when you do a multiplicative. So it was resubmitted and approved in 2017. As Director Farmer alluded, this is a big block. You know, a lot of South Carolina policyholders, and it's its third-largest state for Prudential for this block. Some other observations, the interest rate assumed is a very key assumption in long-term care insurance, because this is, hence the name, long-term. The interest rate, how much money a company can earn off investments is a very, very key assumption in pricing. There's really only two ways for an insurance company to have money available to pay for claims. One is the premium coming in from policyholders, and the second one is the money they earn off their investments from the money received. So one of the observations is that they did use, they've used some different interest rates in the calculation from originally filed, and when that occurs, sometimes that distorts a little bit the loss ratios. It might distort, it may show that the loss ratio is a little worse than it really is if you use the original assumption or what the company originally assumed, or actually earned. And I also note that the projections provided by the company indicate that rate increases may not be warranted for all policy types. So this goes back to that unfairly discriminatory I mentioned. Now, one of the considerations in a group policy, and it's very, you know, it's kind of a tricky situation. Group policies tend to be a little bit more simplistic, they try to be a little easier. They, they may just have kind of one rate or two rates for people. It's not like an individual policy where a rate, you know, is much more by age and things like that, but it does distort, it does produce different results by, I mentioned earlier, by different benefit periods, inflation protection, things like that. So with one flat rate increase, so the company had asked for a flat rate increase, is asking for a flat rate increase, it does produce results that if you have one policy type, you may be subsidizing another person with a different type of policy within that block. The individual policies, I'll try to go quickly through these, but as I kind of highlighted earlier, these stopped selling about 2013. It took about six years to get the initial rate increases up and going for these. The first block has had substantial rate increases so far. If approved, the rate increases would be as high as five and a half times the original rate. South Carolina has approved a little bit more than the nationwide average, but it is, South Carolina is a pretty small piece of this block, but they have approved more than some of the others. Again, the interest rate issue flows through these filings as well. You know, and another kind of an observation is a lot of, you know, I mentioned that a lot of these filings are old, and a lot of people have lapsed, you know, they're not, they've gotten rid of their policy, so there's not a whole lot of original policyholders in force, and so that can put a little bit of pressure on the rate. You know, based on the laws and what is allowed, it does put a lot more pressure on how much of that burden for paying for the claims that block has had on the people that are remaining and persisting, okay? So those people that are remaining have, are taking much more of the force of the premium The other individual blocks, very similar, not quite as high on the increases here, so I'll pretty much skip through these, but very similar. I will say that, I mentioned that the kind of post-2012 is kind of a different animal than the other filings. This rate increase, right now, is the proposed rate increase only applies to policies that have the inflation protection. And that, Director, is the end of my formal presentation.
All right. Couple of questions. You, just minutes or so ago, you said that within a block, one policy may be subsidizing another, and then you said that, pointed out that we, our state has approved rate increases from time to time, while others may or may not have. Are policyholders in our state subsidizing policyholders in other states?
So I would say, yes, there is some subsidization. You know, there are some states, some very large states, that have not been very diligent in approving rate increases for whatever reason, but that block is still producing very high loss ratios, and not necessarily just Prudential, but every company this has impacted. And so when they determine, actuarially determine what the rate increase is needed for a block that hasn't had enough premiums to cover the claims, and a state that is producing that, yes, you have been definitely chipping in more than your fair share at this point.
You also said that there's some rate increases in the blocks from 19 to 140%. Wow, such a big range.
Yeah, it's not as much of an issue, so the range is primarily due to, I didn't really say this from the get-go, and I'll go ahead and say it now, is generally speaking, no one is going to argue that the original premiums for a long-term care policy, the actuaries and other people that price those products unfortunately got it wrong. A lot of the assumptions, basically, in terms of how many people were gonna hold on to the policy, you know, 30 years from now, we guessed wrong, okay? And so what has happened, there's a, there's some key benefit options that that has impacted more than others. People with lifetime benefit options have been, are impacted, those products, those premiums were way underfunded compared to maybe shorter benefit periods, okay? So if you are only, if you purchase a policy with only a three-year benefit period, that wouldn't impact you as much. So that range really addresses some of those product, those product elements that were impacted more by being wrong, by how many people were gonna hold it. You know, and again, you know, so like if you get a flat increase, so like on the group, again, I understand with the group, it's difficult for many companies because of administration, how a group policy is written, and so many times, it is a flat increase that they request, like in this case, but it does create some loss ratios when you apply that to the different blocks with the different benefit periods, inflation protection or not. That's where it produces different rate increases and/or different loss ratios.
So when I've talked to some of our consumers here, for Prudential here in this room, they'll say, "Well, for a long period of time, my rates were stable, didn't go up, and then kind of in the last few years, all of a sudden, there's rate filing after rate filing, and they're going up." The company, should they have been making rate filings over long, or why are they bunched all in one period of years?
Yeah, so it's tricky, because, and again, this is not necessarily a one-company issue. It's not necessarily Prudential. It's, you know, Prudential, obviously, if any of you guys are reading the news, Prudential's not the only company filing for large rate increases, and there's a lot of companies with much higher rate increases. I don't know if you guys attended yesterday. So, you know, the first few years, as I said, this is a long-term policy, so there may have been some very early hints that the product may not be performing the way they had anticipated, but they weren't expecting to have claims for 30 years anyway. So it is, it does take a while to know how many people are gonna hold on to it, if they purchase it at 50, and they're gonna use it at 70, how they're gonna hold on. So the industry did have some hints, but because it was an immature, fairly new block of business, product line, not everybody was as diligent for filing rate increases. But that's really the reason for rate increases in the last five to 10 years is because this product was priced 30 years ago, and now we're getting to that point where people are utilizing the benefits.
Well, this sounds like to me that what you're saying is, the hidden objective here is to run people off the policy.
So...
That's clear to me with what you've said in several statements.
So I wouldn't classify it that way. What I would say is usually, and you may, but from an actuary... an actuarial standpoint, part of my job is to determine that the rate increase request is actuarially appropriate for the benefits provided and in compliance with state law. So there have been cases where we determine that the rate increase request is not appropriate. So what I'm really saying is, the initial premiums, they were inadequate. There is no question. And so my job is to determine what they are asking for in conjunction with what they've collected and charged before. Is that actuarially appropriate and in compliance with state law versus the claims that they have paid out to consumers?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah.
What I'm picking up from your assumptions are, you said you got your assumptions wrong. I would imagine that you thought that people would be dying sooner than they would, than they did. In other words, people were living longer. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the the assumption that was missed the most was how many people would hold on to their policy voluntarily. We call it collapse rate or the.
That's where you.
I'm sorry?
That's where you come across it sounding like you're, you've got a rigged game.
I wouldn't call it rigged. The assumptions were based on diligent research of similar product lines. Long-term care, when it was created thirty years ago, it was a new product. And so when they develop premiums, I do not believe that the premiums were developed as a bait and switch on purpose. They put the best premiums out that they thought were right. Unfortunately, most carriers were wrong. As I alluded to, they most, this product at the time was considered most similar to like an annuity policy or a disability policy, and that's where the lapse rate was taken from. And unfortunately, long-term, from a pricing standpoint, that that wasn't correct. So most people assumed that about four percent a year would give up their policy. Turned out about half a percent. So a lot more people are holding on to these policies than what were originally expected. And that was really what was missed more than necessarily the mortality rate of how often people would die.
Okay, we're going to take a question from Becky Dover, the consumer advocate, and then we're going to start hearing from the consumers. Y'all, y'all are next.
But I got another question.
All right, quickly.
Oh, that assumption, there's another assumption, the interest rate assumption. When I bought this policy in ninety-eight, interest rates were much higher than they are now. Now, interest rates on, like at First System Bank here, renewal CD is like one point one five percent. With inflation, you would, you would invest a CD and get almost nothing because the interest, because inflation is higher than one point one five percent. Is that what's going on?
Yeah, so the interest rate is definitely, and I've highlighted kind of some issues with the past, but you're very correct. That is putting some pressure on the companies prospectively, right? As I, as I mentioned earlier, the amount of money that they have to pay your claims is really driven by two things, right? Your premiums and the money they've earned off their investments. And so you are correct that with a lower interest rate, it is much more difficult to earn money on their investments. There is no question. So on a prospective basis, that is a pressure put on companies.
Okay, Becky?
So there are essentially two parts to this. So let's, let's say that everything that's being asked for is actuarially justified. And Director Farmer approves the full rate request that they've submitted. Does that fix the problem? And on the other side of that, if he were to entirely deny the rate increase request and do like some of the larger states have done that you mentioned, and give a very minimal rate increase, what's the outcome of that?
So would you repeat the question to?
Yeah, so the question was basically, what would happen if Director Farmer approves it all? And what would happen if he approves nothing? Correct?
Yes.
Is that, so I think it's fair to say, and and someone, Kendall or someone else can correct me, I don't believe the company has stated that this would be it. So, so if Director Farmer approves it all, there's no guarantee that there's not going to be more increases, right? As more and more people are aging, we are seeing a lot of companies have filed a lot of increases. So this will not be the silver bullet, more than likely. And again, this is not necessarily a one company issue. It is kind of a market-wide issue. In terms of not approving it, you know, that, so one of the big concerns, and again, I'm going to speak in generality of the market, not necessarily one company issue, but there are a lot of solvency issues in this market. And I don't know if you saw on the, you know, so there was a couple of years ago, there was a very large insolvency. Just last week, there was a very large rehabilitation. And so a lot of companies are facing solvency issues. And that, I think, has put undue pressure on other states and it is putting on pressure on you guys now. So again, that's not necessarily a Prudential issue. But if you don't, if you don't give increases to the companies that really need it, everyone else is picking up the bill. Okay? So Penn Treaty, right now, it has gone into insolvency. They didn't get some of the rate increases. Now, they had their own issues and I'm not, it's bigger than your question, but all the, all policyholders are now taking up a piece of that. And so that's a concern. Solvency is a major issue, and you're putting it on other people, almost a little bit of a subsidy on other people if you don't grant something that is actuarially appropriate.
So you were not able to answer the question about, will they make another rigged filing at some point in the future?
Yeah, I don't, I, my understanding is there's been no guarantee in these filings that this is it.
But they will have the opportunity to answer that question.
Correct.
So just, just hold on.
Yep.
Mr. McKinnon, one, one more.
I've got a question about the conversation of the directors of the Prudential company. Do you all look at how much money they make and how much they carry home?
We, I.
The investors in the company, do you, do you, do you look at how much Prudential is paying the investors?
No, we do not. From an actuarial standpoint, as I mentioned, we follow the actuarial standards of practice and the state law, and that's primarily around loss ratios, which is kind of a claims over premiums. We typically do not get into that. Now, as I mentioned, Director Farmer does have, he can look at expenses as one of the factors in reviewing the rate increase. But as an actuary, that is not something I look at, but that would be a question you can ask of the company.
Okay, let's move to the next phase of the hearing. This is the opportunity that we get to hear from our consumers. So Mr. Collins, you're the first up this morning. I've been coming on around. John Collins. Yes, sir. We, we would ask that you try to hold your comments to five minutes, but, but we're not, I don't have a clock.
You'll have no problem with that?
I don't have a clock. You tell your reporter your name and your phone contact.
I thank y'all for having this today because I have been dealing with the feelings towards the rate increases that you see and who to direct those feelings at. And I'm not sure I've got a good, clear picture yet as to who I ought to mention as a person who's causing me some undue stress. Back in the nineties, I asked my doctor, George Durst, about being ready for old age. And I, give me just a minute to organize my thoughts here. Sorry. I asked him about being able to cover, you know, my expenses in old age. And I had him tell me that, and I'm not sure I can put in the exact words that he did, but if I was concerned about dealing with old age, that I really ought to buy a long-term policy to prevent any disasters that arise from me not being able to pay my bills. And so I have written letters a couple of, three times. This one is the latest one. And my wife and I collaborated with this, getting it put together. And we wrote to the board that we are writing in reference to the upcoming hearings on requested rate increases. The impact of the increases that occurred in recent years have been extremely hard to absorb into our budget as they have far exceeded our social security and retirement annual increases. One of the mistakes that I believe has been made, that has contributed to this situation, was Prudential's decision to stop selling these products. New policies could be designed and targeted to a younger demographic that would have much more available income to deal with requested increases and granted increases and those things. Any new policies that would have been written could have been created and designed on current costs and current trends in today's long-term market care. Premiums could also have been affected by, based on the cost of the days and future trends. And we would remind you of your duty to protect consumers with whatever this body decides on the newly requested increases. In 2014, Prudential requested a forty percent increase, and as you saw a minute ago, was granted a twenty percent increase. This seems to be the standard to ask for, the unexpected absurd requests and then being willing to settle and offer, and offer that somewhere in between what was originally proffered. And I can't think of the last time that I saw a twenty percent increase in inflation over a general market. We would ask that as a body charged with protecting consumers to make the hard decisions and choices to protect us from substantial increases and premium increases. A reminder, these policies have no return of premium, so all premiums belong to Prudential if older policyholders are priced out of these policies. And we ask ourselves, could this possibly be in the intent of Prudential or those folks who are regulators? And I say that appreciating the job that y'all have to do, but we also feel like that there needs to be a strong look at the pace at which we've seen increases along the last few years. Considering the aforementioned, it would appear that responsible and charge of office that you accepted to protect those of us who are, who find we are tied to a product that exploits our helpless position, we would hope you as a protector of South Carolina consumers would give us relief from these onerous increases and would thank you for any consideration that you would give us as a group.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I've got one or two quick questions. Your, your hometown now is?
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant. And so a lot of our policyholders here for Prudential were state employees, got their coverage through state plan. Is that your case as well?
It is. I was, started off here in Brooklyn Casey High School and did three years there, then did twenty-seven years in Charleston County in school system.
As a teacher?
Principal.
Principal, okay. All right. Well, that's a hard enough job.
Well, all of them are hard these days.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Okay, that's really all I've got. I certainly appreciate your, your coming this morning and.
We appreciate the chance to try to respond and draw some attention to the perils that we live with.
Right. And one quick thing, I just remembered from, from what you just said. When the company speaks, they should outline options to people that think they may be priced out of the business. If they don't bring it up, I'll bring it up when, when they get done. But there are options now that were not available seven years ago. Let me quickly add, they're not good options, but they are options that are now available that we didn't have in, in the past. And so we'll, we'll chat about those in a few minutes. Stay tuned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Ms. Mauder? If you would just state your names and where you're from.
I'm Nancy Mauder, and I'm from Marion County. I'm a retired teacher. I have a prob, I have a problem with my voice, so I hope you can hear me. I'm going to do the best I can, and we'll see if I can make out.
Could you just take your time?
While I was teaching, I took out a long-term care policy. That was over twenty years ago. Over time, I've noticed that their policy has become increasingly more expensive. I've looked at it. In fact, the other day, I pulled out my records and just looked for the last ten years. And in 2010, my premium was nine hundred and two dollars a year. And today, I'm paying seventeen hundred and seventy-eight dollars a year. That's almost double. The increase in the percentage of teacher retirement pay certainly has not increased at that rate. So when I read in the paper that insurance companies were requesting a twenty percent increase just after receiving a sixteen point seven percent increase in 2018, I decided to voice my concerns. So I wrote the following letter. And I want this letter to speak for all my fellow teachers that bought these policies and are now living on fixed incomes. Can you hear me? Dear Mr. Farmer, I'm writing to express my concerns over the ever-increasing premiums being charged by the Prudential Insurance Company to long-term care policyholders. These policies were bought by people who in good faith felt that they were making the wise choice to provide for their care should they need it in their old age. And I might add, they felt that they were dealing with a reputable company who would uphold their end of the contract and not take advantage of their policyholders. But today, I am appalled that these policies were sold to public schoolteachers as well as many others in modestly paying jobs who, after retirement, cannot afford to pay these exponentially increasing premiums. Thus, they are now forced to drop their policies altogether or reduce the level of care to standards they didn't expect. And Prudential is left with the money and the interest they made off of these people's payments over the years, and the pays are left with nothing. If these pays had invested that money in an index fund over the last twenty years, they most likely would be self-insured by now. But instead, being teachers, they felt that they needed to make what they deemed to be a safe and secure investment. I implore you to deny Prudential's rate increase. Their miscalculation should not be shouldered by people on fixed incomes who cannot make those additional payments and may need the services that they have so honestly depended on over these many years. So, Mr. Farmer, please do the right thing. Stand up for teachers and just say no.
Thank you, Ms. Mauder. You're, we have a copy of your letter, and it's going to be entered into the record by the court. So we certainly appreciate you and Mr. Mauder coming this morning and well said. Okay, our next consumers will be Mr. Billy McKinnon. And again, if you just state your name, where you're from, where you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. My name is Billy McKinnon. I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. I can't say any eloquent, more eloquent than the lady just, who just came before me. She's pretty, pretty, that's a good observation. About the assumptions, they were inaccurate about the assumptions years ago on interest rates and how, how long people would live. And that's not something I should have to pay for. I am absolutely opposed to any kind of rate increase. I am absolutely opposed to any kind of rate increase, and I'd like to know more about exactly what they intend to do. I think unofficially, the rate increase on my policy would be about nineteen percent, but I don't know. Anyway, I'm opposed to it, and I don't think they deserve, they deserve any more money than they're getting out of me. They need to look at, you also need to look at the compensation of the directors of the company. These directors may be walking away with millions of dollars every year, and the investors in the Prudential company, they need to take, they need to pay part of the price. That's it.
Mr. McKinnon, you and I have spoken before, and I recall that you also were state employees. So, what was the agency that you worked for?
Water Resources. Water Resources no longer exists.
Right.
It was during reorganization, the functions of Water Resources went partly to DEHAC into DNR.
And how long were you a state employee?
I left in 2005, so it was, well, I don't have to do the math.
Yeah, but you worked for Water Resources for a long time.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you making the effort to come today, and certainly appreciate your remarks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to hear from Mr. Robert McKinnon. And if you would, Mr. McKinnon, just state your name before you approach.
I'm Robert L. McKinnon. I live at 154 Bird Farm Road, Saint George, South Carolina, and it's taken quite an effort to be here today. I was at Mr. Farmer's last forum, and I decided to write down some notes from that forum and also make some comments today. I'd also like to say that Mr. Farmer's never failed to return my phone call, and I appreciate that. I'm a retired employee of the South Carolina School System with thirty-six years of service to the students of South Carolina. I'm obviously a senior citizen, and I'm on a fixed income. When it came time to retire, I got my retirement in order with the state. I got my social security in order, but there was one thing, but before retiring, I bought a Prudential long-term policy so that I would not become a burden to my family if homebound or nursing home care was needed in the future. In other words, my biography is similar to hundreds of retirees that couldn't be here today. My biography is like even thousands of people when you start talking about the southeast, and Mr. Farmer and I have come to that conclusion with conversations that we have had. I've had a Prudential long-term care policy for over ten years, which was marketed through the school system for years. Periodically, they'd pop it up and try to, and sell it. As a retiree, I'm on a fixed income where every dollar counts. I am a mirror image of most and a lot of retirees. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, when you hear my story, there's hundreds and even thousands that couldn't be here today. When I purchased my Prudential long-term care policy, I was never told that my premiums would rise, much less rise dramatically, year after year, until one had no choice but to drop the policy so that Prudential could improve its bottom line. But what I'm learning already this morning is their bottom line is to run you off, make you forfeit the policy. Every time premiums go up, hundreds or maybe thousands of fixed income senior citizens are forced to drop the long-term care policies which are critical to elderly care and personal end-of-life planning. This is not fair. It's a sorry way to do business. Lost my place, and it is ruining the lives of countless senior citizens that were counting on Prudential's long-term care policy. Maybe a class action lawsuit's in order. At the last forum, there was a lot of talk about possibly a class action lawsuit. Maybe that's something that needs to be done. Looking back at my notes, in 2017, Prudential asked for a twenty percent increase. I like to fell over. In 2018, they asked for sixteen point seven. That's thirty-six percent, thirty-six point seven percent increased in two years. I couldn't believe it, but now I hear it's going to get, it could get a lot worse if the insurance department does not do what they need to do. A 2020, the year 2020 increase in premiums, small to large, will force hundreds or even thousands of seniors to drop Prudential term policies, long-term policies. Prudential must be forced to honor their contracts. They must be forced to honor their contracts. The South Carolina Department of Insurance must intervene and protect the consumer, most of which are elderly senior citizens who have tried to plan for the long-term care and do the right thing by their families. It is not responsibility of the consumer of Prudential long-term care policy to protect their bottom line and profit margin of a Prudential poor business model. Mr. Farmer and your decision-makers here at the South Carolina Department of Insurance, do what's right. Be a voice for the senior population. Do not approve any increase for Prudential long-term care policies. Vote no to Prudential and stand up for the consumer. Let Prudential figure out how to solve their long-term care problem. No more increases. Mr. Farmer and the Insurance Department, do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Well said. All right, I don't think Mr. William Ackerman is here. He has written us, and so we have a letter from Mr. Ackerman. I'll ask Joe Craigin to come read that letter into the record.
Okay.
And I think the court reporter already has a copy of the letter, so we'll get it.
This letter is from William Gray Ackerman, who is a retired dentist, and he wrote the letter to me in anticipation of the hearing. "To whom it may concern, my wife Kathy is a retired educator, and I am a disabled retired dentist." Both signed, signed up through the South Carolina Budget and Control Board, issued long-term care insurance, first issued through Aetna, later acquired by Prudential. Over the years, we have seen our joint yearly premium go from thirteen hundred in 2010 to the most recent premium of thirty-eight hundred dollars in 2020, almost two-hundred percent in ten years. Unfortunately, for several years, we have had no earned income and depended heavily on social security and retirement benefits to pay these outlandish premiums. Rest assured, our income has decreased over the last ten years, as I am sure is the case with most people who have this type of insurance. Because of our current age and other health issues, we are pretty much locked into this LTC policy. I contacted your agency previously when an increase occurred, only to be told that the insurance company was allowed to do so. But now, with new government oversight, I would hope this company and others will be held accountable for any reasonable increase. I find that the previous increases were totally out of line with other businesses and industries. In my previous occupation, I could have never raised my fees two-hundred percent in a ten-year period, ironically because the insurance is, quote, "allowable fee schedule," close quote, would not up their payments to such a degree, causing pushback, especially from the covered patients. Lastly, I would have never invested in this insurance so that we would not be a burden to our family or society had I known that the increases in premiums, past and future, would be so dramatic and financially hurtful. Thank you, W. Gray Ackerman, DMD.
Thank you. That's entered into the record.
I will. Donna Shannon, Columbia, South Carolina. I'd like to thank the South Carolina Department of Insurance for inviting me here today and giving me an opportunity to participate in the meeting, and I would also like to thank my fellow policyholders who came today. I don't really know that I can add any more to what they've already said, but I'll give it a try. I was informed of this meeting because I had written to Prudential in 2018 about the rate increase that many of us experienced and copied the Department of Insurance, and I understand now that these kinds of hearings are relatively new. And so, I would like to encourage Prudential to inform their policyholders here in South Carolina of any future hearings that are related to a premium increase, because I think, as others have mentioned, that there could possibly be many other people here in this room today. So, we're really not just speaking for ourselves, but we're really representing them as well. And you are the ones who know who the policyholders are. I don't think the Department of Insurance can, can be expected to inform them. In nineteen, in 2009, I signed up for a long-term, a long-term health care policy, a fairly modest one, not a Cadillac version by any means, after having received promotional material from Prudential through my employer, the University of South Carolina, and it was promoted as the employee insurance program of the South Carolina Budget and Control Board. I'm sure that that might be the same thing that happened to some of you. In the email I received from USC, the turnaround, oh, it was described as a rare opportunity. That was their words, a rare opportunity. And the turnaround time for enrolling was relatively short, and I was still working at the time and very busy, but in retrospect, I realize I probably should have hired an attorney or at least an insurance expert to help me scrutinize the policy I was signing up for, especially after listening to Mr. Dillon's presentation. Of course, I understood about the inflation protection offers that I would be getting approximately every three years, but the substantial premium rate increases were not something I anticipated, which I understand may be true for some of the rest of you. So, I also got the twenty percent increase in 2017, sixteen point seven in 2018, and now the increase that's being requested at this time. So, I hope that Prudential and the Department of Insurance will keep in mind that those of us, you know, many of you who have just spoken, are part of the South Carolina retirement system, and we get a whopping one percent a year increase in our retirement benefits. And, well, social security, you all know as well as I do about the supplements we get there, one point six in 2020, two point eight in 2019, two percent in 2018, point three percent in 2017. So, that's where most of us are getting our, you know, quote-unquote raises. I know that, of course, Prudential uses different inflation figures when they are putting together their proposals, but I hope that the Department of Insurance will keep ours in mind when it considers these rate increases. In order to retain our policies, some may have to forego inflation offers, cut back on the benefits of their original policies. Others will have to give up their policies altogether, as other people have mentioned. But as I understand it and from what I've read about long-term health care, that is exactly what insurance companies expect. I also understand that insurers underestimated how long policyholders would live and overestimated how many would drop their policies on which insurers would no longer have to pay claims. These miscalculations are regrettable, but when I miscalculate something related to my personal finances, I have no one who helps with that responsibility. It's mine. I note also that according to Barron's, Prudential paid out over one point five billion dollars in stock dividends in 2018. The company and its stockholders appear to be doing quite well. By my rough estimation, if the policy increases, this policy increases improved, and if premium increases continue as they have, even assuming that I don't opt for the inflation offers, by the time I am in my early or mid-eighties, my monthly premium will be in the neighborhood of one thousand dollars a month. And that's, I mean, that's just way too much. That's a lot for any retiree living on a fixed income. Of course, as has been mentioned earlier today, I know that this issue is bigger than any of us here. The rising cost of long-term health care and rising premiums for long-term health care insurance are challenges being faced all over the country. This burden is a shared responsibility, but long-term health care policy shareholders, policyholders, sorry, should not bear a disproportionate part of it. So, I hope the Department of Insurance will keep these things in mind as it considers the requested premium increases for Prudential's policyholders in South Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. So, we have one more letter, and it's from Ruth Henderson, who could not be here today. Kendall Buchanan, our deputy of Consumer and Market Services, will read the letter into the record.
This is from Chaplin Lieutenant Colonel Ruth Elaine Henderson, U.S. Air Force, retired. My mother is Dorothy Everett Henderson Hips and is a retiree of the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control. I consider her and other retired employees of SCDHEC as casualties of the long-term care insurance industry. As a state employee, she was sold on the idea of preparing for life as a senior by paying into insurance, which we now know as a pie in the sky by the insurance companies, a way to make more money on the backs of hard-working people. The companies made a mistake in estimating what they would have to spend and are raising premiums so persons affected can pay for the insurance companies' mistakes. We all know this. To allow these companies to continue to raise the premiums on persons who, like my mother, have had to decrease their benefit already to keep the policy in effect and still live within their means of a fixed income is ridiculous. I'm thankful the state of SC is working to protect its retirees from this price gouging. Last year, when I made a call to Prudential to ask about using some of her benefits, I was told she would have to have an evaluation and then wait about ninety days or longer for eligibility. This eligibility period could be waived if she became a hospice patient. However, she would not pass the evaluation for eligibility if she could feed herself. To clarify, I said, in quotes, "You mean if she can lift a spoon to her lips even though she..." though she cannot stand enough, long enough, to fix a meal, she will not qualify for the benefits that she was led to believe she would have when she bought into this policy?" End quote. The response was, in quotes, "I'm sorry, but that is correct." End quote. At this rate, mother believes she will never live to see her benefits help her, and that is creating unnecessary stress in her mind and heart. I am certain she is not alone.
And, Mr. Mrs. Hendricks. Would y'all like to speak? You don't have to. Just being here means a lot, but you're certainly welcome to.
I'll just sit.
Sure, sure.
I'm not very good at standing for very long. Just do a right-hand thing. Thank you.
Sure.
Don't really have anything prepared, other than to say that I can understand why insurance costs do rise, but I don't understand why they rise above the inflation rate. And it would appear to me, based upon what I'm hearing here, having us subsidized for other states that are not willing to pay their fair share is not a way of going. Now, I think that's terrible. My wife has long-term care. I don't, I didn't qualify for it. When I applied for it, they turned me down. They didn't like the health condition I was in. So, no big deal. I'm retired teacher and retired Air Force, so I'm not hurting, but I don't like what I'm seeing. When you buy insurance, you're basically asking for a risk transfer. That's what insurance is about. The risk here is that you live long enough to be able to collect on the insurance when your time comes. It's a fair proposition, but it would appear to me that Prudential and possibly other companies are trying to price them out of the market. You get into a certain pool, an age pool, the older you get, the more likely you're going to have to turn in a claim, and they're going to have to honor it. And in pricing them out of that market, it reduces their risk, if you will, of having to pay out. So, having rate increases that keeps that with inflation, I can understand that. But when you start going above that, that's when I'm thinking greed setting in, and that really irritates the crap out of me, as I'm sure it does you as well. The last thing that I wanted to mention is this. How many of you have received this brochure? It's called LIFT. In looking at it, it looks like it would be a pretty good deal. Wife and I thought about it and looked through it, thought it was okay, until we got to one part, where they mentioned on the phone that they would have a nurse contact us and come and look through our home and do an analysis and make recommendations. Well, we've been living in our home for a long time, and we've made adjustments as we've had to go along. I don't really want somebody coming in and inspecting my home and making recommendations that they could turn, in turn, go to the insurance company. And it would appear to me, I may be wrong, that if they find something is wrong, we can't afford to have it fixed, and we end up having an accident in the home and turning in a claim to go long-term, that it looks to me like they may have deniability. I don't know whether that's what their game is or not. I'd like to have this looked into, Mr. Farmer.
Yep, we're glad to.
That's basically as far as all that I wanted to discuss.
Okay.
I thank you very much. And to be honest with you, this crowd that we've got here is really great, but I think it only scratches the surface. I really do honestly believe that we are mirroring a lot more that probably would be out the door by now, sitting out the door, not enough room in here. And therefore, I wish we could get more publicity about what's going on.
You're exactly correct. So, before you go back to your place, your name and where you're from again?
Michael Hendricks, Ermo. Retired from the Air Force for twenty-two years, and then I retired seventeen years with the Goodberry School District as economics and government teacher.
Okay, good. Let me let you. Okay. That concludes the list of people that have signed up. Anyone else here that would like to speak? All right. So, Becky, we will let you ask questions of the company after they speak and guys. Welcome. We appreciate you being here. You heard heartfelt comments and testimony. I've asked a number of them to be here. We reached out to most of these folks. These are the comments I hear daily. I don't have good answers. But please come and, you know, let us have a little more information on the rate increase and why, and then we'll ask a few questions. This is certainly not adversarial. This is South Carolina. We don't do that. But we do have a few questions, and we appreciate you being here to answer.
I'm Keith Burns. I'm with Prudential, responsible for an actuary involved in pricing some of these products, and as well as, you know, my job is in part to look for the rate increases when they're when they were. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you, you know, my job is in part to, you know, seek the rate increases that Prudential can justify as needed, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we go along, so. But I do want to first, you know, just real quick, I want to applaud, obviously, a lot of educators in here. I want to applaud you. My family has grown with some recent, like, some of my kids getting married, and we're now, we have five educators out of nine in our family, and I can't a bit more than applaud you for the effort and the time you've put into that. I highly respect educators, so. So, let's see. Okay, so, these are some of the things we'll talk about. You know, we'll talk about the overview of the long-term care insurance, which I think, you know, all of you are well familiar with. You know, then we'll get into why the rate action is needed, as well as, you know, a little bit more detail for each of the policy forms, what we're asking for, you know, and historically what we have received approval for. We'll talk about the options that Prudential offers when rate increases, you know, are approved and submitted to you guys for, to let you know and be advised of what your options are. We'll talk a little bit about what we've experienced, what consumer, customers have done, and then we'll talk a little bit about our Prudential's claim initiatives, some things that are going on that are helping, hopefully helping to better, give us some better results in the future, and, you know, with the intent, at least, to try to help minimize the needs for future rate increases. So, just real quick on an overview, I'm not going to read any of this. You guys know this. You know your products. I will just, you know, and listening a little bit to some of the comments that are made and, you know, obviously, understanding or hearing about, you know, people that have experienced, they're paying, you know, maybe twice as much today or three times. You know, I just want to make sure that we distinguish between two things. One is the rate increases that we're asking for, the enforced rate increases, the ones that weren't originally expected at the time of pricing, the ones that, you know, you did not know about, and we didn't know about until later, you know, when we recognized the deterioration and asked for the increases. And the other is that I heard about, and again, just to make sure it's clear, there is a, what was normally referred to as guaranteed purchase option, which, you know, which is offered, depending on the product, it might be offered once a year, might be offered three times a year, or every three years, sorry. And that is an opportunity to try to increase your benefits. It was, if you bought this type of policy, which a lot of the state, the state plan that we, a lot of you are on, that they talked about, have this feature in it, where you're going to get that offer, and you can choose to take it, you can choose to not take it. It's just an opportunity to get some additional coverage without any underwriting. It was part of the plan that, you know, that you signed up for. But again, you don't have to take those increases that come with that, so you, you know, have those options.
Got a question. Why would you want to buy more insurance when it's obvious that Prudential's trying to run you off the policy as it is? Why would you want to buy more?
Well, we can talk about that. I will flat-out say that's not Prudential's stance is to run you off. I will say, Prudential, it's not our, it's not our stance to try to run policyholders off the block. This is not, that's not the...
Astronomical fees for your insurance, you don't have any choice but to drop it.
I understand that raises some concerns, you know, depending on the different people, your financial situation. I understand it puts some people in a tougher position than others, but I'm just trying to share that it's not Prudential's stance to try to run you off. We are going to try to give you some opportunities to keep your coverage, and if you can't afford it, to try to keep your, to allow some different kind of benefit reductions.
Yeah, so, we're going to let Mr. Burns finish his comments, and then we're free to ask questions. No, 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 that's, while we're here, we're going to get them all answered.
Okay. This is, again, just to provide a little bit higher overview, this is not Prudential data. This is just, you know, coming from some industry sources, but to try to give you a sense of, you know, from the beginning, you know, kind of what's going on. The graph on your far, I guess, your far right, this is what the intention was. The blue line was the expectation that you would be paying, you know, premium consistently over time, and it, you know, and it would, you know, the hope was it would not have to have to increase over time. But yet, what we're trying to fund is the claims, which is in the red line, which obviously is going to start off lower when people are younger, and then work their way up over time. The, you know, the graph here on the left is kind of showing, you know, the blue is kind of the premiums coming in, which, you know, at first, we get a lot more premiums coming in than claims, which is the red line. It's showing that we're, the difference between the two graphs here over on the left is that we're going to take that premium, and we're going to establish a reserve that's going to be set aside to help pay for those future claims in red. And so, that's how we're funding it. We need the premiums, obviously, to set it in reserves so that we can pay all future claims, as that is the commitment of Prudential. As long as premiums are getting paid, we'll pay the claims. So, that's just kind of a little bit of background of what that's about. The policies, which you'll see virtually all long-term care policies in the industry, are considered guarantee renewable, which means as long as, as long as the premiums are coming in, we are obligated to pay the claims, but it does allow the opportunity to increase premiums. And, you know, I think it's understandably how hard it is for people going through the increases. It's still, you know, when you look back thirty years, as Mr. Dillon talked about, and to not really know with a brand-new product, not really to know, you know, how things would trend out, how claims would trend out, how people would hold on to their policy or the mortality rates, there was a lot of predictions going on that obviously haven't come through, but that's an important piece of being guarantee renewable, is if we, if we were locked in and couldn't have that opportunity to increase rates once we had the experience come in, you know, there wouldn't be any companies probably offering the product. So, it's kind of an important feature. And I guess I'll just leave it at that. But, you know, and obviously, you know, one thing that I think we all agree to is if it's the right premium, there is a need for this. Obviously, the need for care coming for, you know, as people age and become disabled, there is clearly a need for this. So, I'm a big believer in this product. You know, just unfortunate that the premiums didn't work out the way we could. To get a little bit more about the reason for the rate increase, Mr. Dillon talked about this. Here's some graphs. I picked two products out of the, out of all the products that were in there, just as examples of what's going on. ILTC-1 is our, is an individual product, sold on an individual basis. I think everybody in here has a group product, so maybe we'll spend a little more time on that, but that's basically what the blue line, what the orange line is showing is where we thought the persistency assumptions would be by policy duration when the product was originally priced. And when I talk persistency, it's a combination of people voluntarily lapsing their policy as well as mortality. And as Mr. Dillon pointed out, it was, in the industry, it was, you know, definitely the rates, mortality rates and the lapse rates are much lower than ever expected. This creates this gap, the difference between it. So, the blue line, you know, if you look at the blue line, these are the people potentially that could, will go on claim each and every one of these years, which is much higher than we thought it would be. And that's where a lot of the need comes from. You're seeing the same thing with GLTC-3, which I think a lot of you is what you have. We're seeing that same kind of, you know, experience where what we thought originally versus what we're experiencing, which is the blue line, again, creating the need to recognize that there's a lot more people insured in the later durations than we originally This leads, this slide is to talk a little, to get a little bit more filling by policy duration, by policy year for, you know, where the claims will actually come in. If we talk like ILTC-1 there, you know, for the most part, the claims have been pretty close to the original expectations in their early durations, in the early policy durations. But as you can see, as time moves forward, we're, the experience is actually getting to where even people that are going on claim are now starting to, we're seeing more of that than we originally expected, and that's expected to continue to trend as people age. It's expected to trend to even show a bigger gap. For group, we're actually seeing some good results when it comes to the specific morbidity, the claims that are coming in, where actually the blue line is what's happening. It's actually lower than what the orange line is. This is helping dramatically to help keep the rate increases from what they really could be. And when you combine, but when you combine this with the previous slide, even though we don't have to pay out as much in a specific policy year than, I'm sorry, even though for a particular person, maybe the expectation is now they're not going to go on claim as often, and that's our experience, they're not going on claim as often as we thought they might. The fact that there are more people in that particular duration that may go on claim, it's increasing the claims overall. Is that, not sure if that made sense. I don't know if I explained that very well. So, okay, so, again, that's helping a little, definitely on the group side. This is going to try to tie those two slides together. ILTC-1, the original pricing was... they might. The fact that there are more people in that particular duration to, that, that may go on claim, it's increasing the claims overall. Is that, not sure if that made sense. I don't know if I explained that very well. So, okay, so, so again, that's, that's helping a little, definitely on the group side. This is going to try to tie those two slides together. ILTC-1, the original pricing was priced at a loss ratio of 68%. In case you're not familiar with the term of loss ratio, it's basically just how much we expect to pay in claims over what we expect to receive in premiums, historically and in the future. The pricing loss ratio, again, was priced at 68% for that particular product. And so basically, we are expecting to pay out 68 cents on every dollar that premium came in, was the original expectation. Unfortunately, that, that didn't happen for ILTC-1. Without any rate, premium rate increase action, we're at, we would actually expect to pay out $2.98 for every dollar we pay in. With the rate increases that South Carolina has previously approved on ILTC-1, that number comes down to 216%. And if we get the full rate increase approved that we're asking for, we'll still be paying out a, a $1.61 for every dollar in, in premium received. We are, we are sharing in the losses. I know it's hard to believe. We are sharing in the losses. We're not making money on this product. GLTC-3, not quite as bad, as we talked about, that the, the claims were not as bad. So you can look at the numbers there. It was priced with a much higher loss ratio, mainly because there was, there's, in group side, there's not a lot of commission involved, not a lot of agents involved that you have to pay commission to. The, the results, again, we went from 92 to 136% loss ratio. With the previous approvals in South Carolina, that comes down to 114%. And, and if they approve the full request, it will go to 105% again. Let's see, so, I think that's- I'm going to grab some water here, if you don't mind.
Sure.
This gives a little bit more detail on, you know, what's historically has been approved and what we're asking for today.
So bear in mind, they, they cannot see that.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize for the small, small writing there. I'll just, so, you know, feel free to, if you want me to, to go into all of it, but, you know, it's what it's basically saying for ILTC-1, which is, which is the, the product we've asked for the highest rate increases on. Cumulative rate increases to date, including the current requested increase, on average, we're asking for 332% is cumulative, based on historically what's been approved in South Carolina, along with what we're asking for. What's been approved is the 118% historically for ILTC-1 on average, all the way down. And we, we previously asked for a 20% increase, which we ended up working with the state and decided to withdraw and refile, because we went through some, a lot of experience analysis, which led us to believe we needed more. So that additional amount that was needed was an additional 65%, creating the current request of an average increase of 98% for ILTC-1. The 98% request today, along with the 118% that was previously approved, gets us to the 332% increase in total cumulative. You can see there, too, we don't have as much policyholders in premium as we do on, on the group GLTC-3 product, but, but that's, you know, that's just a little bit more information there. When we talk about the individual products, we are asking for varying the, the rate increase by some benefit options. And we break it down here. The, the, the top chart shows the averages, the bottom chart shows how we're breaking it down by the different options. You know, this is, this is mainly a result because, and again, Mr. Dillon alluded to this, some of the benefit features are, experience is worse than other benefit features. So if you do have automatic inflation or have some high benefit periods, chances are your experience has been much worse, and therefore, it's actuarially justified to ask for more for there and less for some of the other benefits. GLTC-3, I'm sorry, the group, all the group products here. GLTC-3 is the one I think you're most interested in. We have, our, we have got approval at the second, second column over, we have received a total cumulative approval of 40%. If you go a little bit further down, we are asking for 19% on this product. And the cumulative effect of that gets us to a 66, 67% increase. The, you know, some of the other products, GLTC-4, for example, is a much, it's a little bit newer product. That experience hasn't been quite as, as deteriorated as much, so we're just requesting 10% for that product at this time. I do want to mention that, you know, most, most of the policyholders on our GLTC-3 block have the GPO feature that we talked about and have a five-year benefit period or greater.
Could you explain that, GPO?
That, yeah, that's what we talked about earlier, I'm sorry, guaranteed, guaranteed purchase option. So it's the inflation option that you can choose to elect it later on. This particular group is, is seeing some of the worst experience than our other groups. So if we did start varying it by, start varying the, the 19% increase by some of the different benefit features, you know, we probably would have had to ask for a little bit higher rate increase for this group, a little lower for some of the others. All right, so, so as far as, as far as when the rate increases come out, we're trying to, you know, make sure it's clear to offer to policyholders what their options are. We understand that not everybody's going to afford, be able to afford the rate increases. So we're trying to offer some options to, to allow you to keep paying the same premium you were, you were at, or somewhere in that ballpark. On the individual side, we have a lot of automatic inflation. It's not as common on the group side, but we have a lot of it on the individual side. And one of the things that we did this time around, it's something, you know, you have credits, it did start with another company a few, a few years back. Prudential decided it was a good idea, decided we wanted to do it ourselves, but it's called an inflation landing spot. What it does for those with automatic inflation, it allows an opportunity to, where we solve for, if, if the policyholder's going through, you know, whatever, make up a number, if they're going through a 50%, increase, it allows the opportunity to say, I have, this policyholder might have inflation, it might, the benefits might be increasing at 5% per year. It's going to solve for an actuarial equivalent amount such that maybe going forward to offset that 50% increase, you, your inflation will say go down to, to 3% or 2%. It's, what we're trying to do here is allow the policyholder to keep their existed inflated amount, not change that, not change their premium, keep the currently existing premium they're paying, but instead of paying that 50% increase, just have their benefits go from five, inflate in the future, instead of at 5%, will inflate at a lower amount, whatever is actuarially justified. And, and there's a lot of work involved there to try to make sure that those, those options are equivalent to each other. So it doesn't matter to us which one you take, from our financial perspective, you know, either one is, is, is going to bring in this, bring in the same result. But it's up to the policyholder to choose what's best for them. You know, I like it because a lot, you know, some will argue that they bought this 5% inflation protection, but yet inflation hasn't been at the 5% on, on some of the long-term care services. So it might be an opportunity, they might be overinsured. It's an opportunity to get back to a point where they might still have good, solid protection going forward and be able to, to avoid the rate increase. Unfortunately, that's very unique for people with automatic inflation. Doesn't work with the guaranteed purchase option that we talked about. So, let's see, so then, other reduction, other options that are offered, we do look at, you know, offering different, you know, people can all, can reduce their lifetime maximum benefit, they can reduce their daily benefit. I know on the group side, we, we created something where we could actually combine those two, for those that have proper benefits. You might take a, a little hip from the lifetime maximum and a little hip from your daily benefit maximum, and the equivalent will be to be able to continue to pay the same premium rate going forward that you were paying, but with a little bit lower lifetime max, a little bit lower daily maximum. You know, there's also opportunities, you can increase your, your benefit waiting period, you can reduce, drop some riders, things like this. Not all offers are available on the group side because there are some complications there. But, but there's, you know, these are the offers that we're trying to make to our policyholders to give them opportunity. And when we send out a, a notification letter notifying them of the premium, one of the things that's on there is if you don't see something that, that, you know, if you have any questions or don't see something that, that sparks your interest, or you're looking for another option, opportunities, you know, there is a call center number on there to call, and hopefully they can help walk you, walk you through some other options as well. I do want to also point out, this is something Prudential's giving a lot of thought to right now. We're in that brainstorming phase. We're trying to figure out what other options exist that, that would be maybe a little bit more consumer-friendly, something that the regulators and the consumers would, would appreciate. You know, so if, if there is a future rate increase, hopefully we'll be in a better position at that time to, to, you know, offer some other opportunities like this inflation landing spot. We're trying to figure out what that next version will be. So we're open to ideas, we're brainstorming right now, so, but, go ahead.
I would, I would like to suggest two options.
Sure.
Just, just buy it out, just, just get your money back. If you, if you, if you just, if you just want to just give up the policy altogether and get part of the money back that you're investing in the policy. Or possibly, another option would be to convert the policy over to, to say, a lifetime, a life insurance policy, something that'll be more, 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 that you can predict what you'll be paying for in the future. So-
Yeah, a lot more years of understanding what the life expectations are. Those are, those are fair, and actually, the first one you offered, suggested is actually something that the, the regulators are actually even talking, discussing.
That's what I want to do. I just want to get out of it. I don't want to, I don't want to come down here every year, going over the same thing again and again. I just want to get out. So, it's a great point. When, when we're done, the company is going to stay, our consumer services people are going to stay, and we're going to chat on those individual options that, that the company has and that you may be able to avail yourself to.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We're, we're all ears, so. This is just showing his, kind of historically, what we've experienced. This is nationwide, but we were actually looked at the South Carolina results, they're very, very similar. The, you know, when we, when we implemented rate increase, we're still seeing about 86% of the policyholders continue to, they pay the higher premium. We do see about 10, 11% that will take a benefit reduction option, so they might continue to pay the same premium they were paying before, but, but have a little bit less benefits. And then we do see roughly 2% to 3% that will lapse their policy. One thing Prudential did a while back was if somebody does lapse their policy because of a rate increase, you know, we want them to have a non-forfeiture value, which is, it's a dramatically reduced benefit, but, but it's an opportunity at least to take that, the premiums that you paid in to put it in a non-forfeiture fund. So if you do, so if and when you do go on claim, you can at least have access to that for those that, that did elect to lapse their policy due to a rate increase. But I will say again, I, you know, I, I know it's hard on a lot of people, but it is not our intentions to try to get people to lapse. I mean, I know it's going to be common, it's going to happen, but that's not our intentions. So, am I doing okay on time, by the way? They're just, okay.
We can start to wrap.
So, the last, the last few slides, the last three slides are, are on some of our things that we're, we're taking initiatives right now. Obviously, it's very important, as, as we saw earlier, some of the claim slopes, it's, it's going to get worse, you know, as, as more and more of our policyholders age. We're trying to find some things that, that, that we hope that policyholders will benefit from, might not be for everybody. One, the gentleman shared with the LIFT program, let me tell you a little bit about that. That's, that's a program, it's not, it's a, it's a company outside of Prudential that, that offers it. If you accept going into the LIFT program, they will come out, as, as the gentleman said, and evaluate your home situation, you know, and I've, I've never been through it, so I'm not going to be able to speak to it perfectly, but my understanding is they're going to look at the different things, they're going to look at, at, you know, is there throw rugs that might, you know, might be in bad positions that, that might result in a fall, or is there handrails? Things that can be, they can, they're going to try to come up with some suggestions on ways to help people to not fall, or just to live a little bit better in their own home. That company is not tied to Prudential. They will not share the results with Prudential. All we know is that person accepted this because Prudential's going to pay for it. We're offering that. Now, obviously, there's, possibly it's a win-win situation. Hopefully, the policyholders can gain some understanding, make some, make some adjustments, but Prudential will, will also, you know, the hope is, if, if there's fewer falls, then hopefully there'll be fewer claims in the future, too. So hopefully, it is a win-win for, for both us and the, the consumers. We're, that's more example of one program. Sorry you missed us, sir. We just talked about the lift.
And we'll, we'll have a different conversation in a few minutes.
Yep. But, but, you know, that, that's an example of something we're trying to do. Again, we're, we're investing our money because we think it's not only going to help the consumer, but we think it might help those claim streams down the road, too, which hopefully will lead to, to fewer, you know, requests for rate increases. We're looking at some others. There's a lifeline screening that, that we're looking close at right now, that just will help get, you know, people to go in and get tests on different things to see, you know, find some early indicators of situations. You know, obviously, all, all along the lines of the earlier, you know about your conditions, the, the better off you'll be, you can take care of yourself, and maybe they'll, they'll help Prudential in the long run, too, as well as the consumers, because the, the future rate increase, lower rate increases or not, you know, maybe no more increases in the future. Claims management, actually, let me, let me just go, go here. So, so we talked a little bit about the lift and the lifeline screenings here. Again, we're, we're constantly thinking about some others. We, right now, we're actually, you know, looking to, to see what other opportunities there might be that might be helpful. And again, maybe not everybody chooses to do it, but we're going to try to make that offer to people. In addition to that, we're, we're also trying to, to do things that will help detect, as we all know, within any insurance industry, there's always going to be some, some fraud or some waste of, and abuse of the benefits. We obviously, we want to pay for every dime that we owe to people that are legitimately benefit-eligible and submitting legitimate claims. That's what we want to pay, but hopefully, we want to find, find that, we know there are people out there that might stretch the truth a little bit, or flat-out commit fraud. And we're, we're going to invest more money into trying to make sure we do our best to try to find those situations. And again, if we can find that, we can stop those payments, claim payments, we can make that future claim cost curve just a little bit lower. So there's, there's, again, it's a, it's a vendor program, but these, these are ideas that other companies have developed. We're just using them, we're just paying for them for their services. But there's, there's a program out there that will actually help when, when people come into their home. It actually makes it easier for them, they just clock in, clock out on this system, it's going to track their time. We're going to, we're going to see some savings because you tend to, you know, when, when you did it all manually, there's a lot of trust in the word. when, when you did it all manually, there's a lot of trust in the words. So, that, that person that stayed for five hours and worked with that individual, you know, suddenly it gets, you know, if they spent five hours and fifteen minutes, it gets rounded up to six hours. And now, we're paying a little bit extra, you know, every time they come in. We, we'll track those things, we'll make sure that the proper payments get made. It also makes it easier for the care providers because it's a very nice electronic system. They don't have to do near as much paperwork. Then the bottom thing, data analytics, we're, we're again investing some, some money, some time to try to help us better predict when those situations, when those fraudulent situations might occur. We'll, we'll never go out and just stop paying a claim. I mean, it's, this is just helpful indicators to try to, to say, we need to pay a little bit more attention to this one. And, and then, you know, we'll, we'll make the, at the proper point in time if it's truly not a legitimate claim. You know, you hear stories out there in the industry of, of the policyholders that are, you know, on claim receiving some nice benefits, you know, and yet they're, you know, just got done running a ten K or whatever, you know, so it happens. We need to try to find those situations. So, I think that's it for my planned discussion.
I have a couple of questions and we're going to let Ms. Dunbar, the consumer, after that, ask whatever questions she may have and then we'll open it up to the point. So, I certainly appreciate you being here, it's great information, especially this at, at the end where you're, you're looking for answers, you're looking for options, you're looking for ways to help consumers. And we certainly appreciate that. If we need to have conversations with you and your consumers, our consumers as well thinking of ideas on how you can help them further, we're open to that. But, as been documented by Mr. Dillon and to you, especially on the group policies, we've granted rate increases over the last several years. Some of our folks are paying twice as much as they paid, even up to four or five times. You know, much than they, more than they originally started. You know, and, and as Mr. Dillon said, y'all probably would acknowledge, we're helping to subsidize other states. South Carolina is just a small state, we, we're less than one percent of your premium point. How is, you know, if, if we approve or disapprove this rate filing, how's that going to factor in? Why is it even going to matter? Because we're such a, a, a small part of the overall picture. And we've already done quite a bit, especially on, on the group side.
So, so a couple of things. You know, number one, Prudential's committed to, to equity bucks of states. We're going to keep pursuing states that have not approved the, the full increases. We want to get to that point that, that everybody's paying the, the same thing. Unfortunately, you know, we do need the approval of the states to get us there. But, what we're asking for in South Carolina is not any different, you know, we're not asking you to pay any more than any other state that we're, that we're seeking increases for. You know, Mr. Dillon's numbers talked a lot about how, how, how South Carolina was a little bit ahead. It, it is primarily, and I think you alluded to this, it is primarily because of, of a small number of states that are large, unfortunately, they're large premium states that are being very difficult to work with when it comes to the rate increases. I believe, and actually, you know, I just looked at this a little bit ago. If we actually look at what we're seeing and what we've seen from states, including, you know, we have, have a handful of states that have now offered counteroffers that are, you know, just recently, things like this. If we kind of add that all up, there's still probably roughly about, on average, you know, I'm not, on average, probably about thirty, at least on the individual side, about thirty states that have approved more than South Carolina. So, it does come down to the, it's those handful of big states with the, with the large premium. That's, that's creating some of the, the issues here. We don't look at a, I mean, I, I don't know if I like the word subsidizing because we're still, your, your rates are still, that we're asking for are still justified based on, you know, the experience that we're, that we're seeing and what, and what we've asked for. But, I do get it, I do understand that it's, it's, it's an issue that's going on today.
It, it's coming down to how much more can we pay? We, we doubled, gone up to five times more than we ever expected. And I understand your rates could be justified, one way to look at it. But, as the director here, we can look at things other than the normal actuarial findings. So, at, at what point, you know, we, we pay about as much as we can. So, everybody in this room that's testified has said in one fashion or another that they're tightening their belts. They've got to, we're on fixed incomes, these rates keep going up. So, what is the company doing to reduce their expenses, tighten their belts?
Well, you know, from a, from a company's standpoint, it will really, long-term care is, is regulated to long-term care regulation. We understand Prudential's, you know, is making some money in other product lines. We are expected to make, you know, to, to try, to adhere to the long-term care regulations. And that is, you know, we don't, the idea isn't necessarily to, to share in the losses with other product lines. It's to absorb their own losses. And, you know, as far as commitments, I mean, we're, you know, we're like other companies. We, we go through our downsizing and stuff, we're currently going through some of that as well. But, you know, and as mentioned, we're trying to get creative on, on some, some ideas that might help in the future, but.
And you, you mentioned if policyholders have questions, then there's an eight hundred number. Give us a little more confidence that when I call that policyholder number, that I'm going to get more than put on hold a lot and then somebody that really doesn't care. They can be able to walk me through my options, they go, how are they going to be able to help us?
The, I probably can't answer that myself as best, that's not my area. We, Prudential does use a third-party administrator to handle a lot of the operations side of things. And it was intended, that was intended to help also save on some, some of the costs. You know, it's my understanding, I mean, I've never called it myself, so, but.
We'll probably give it a try and see how that works.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and that's, but that's my understanding and, and, you know, I used, when, when they were at Prudential, I worked with them a little bit closer and they, you know, and they were, we talked about the different options and things like that, so.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping you're honest. I've called that number and they're reading off of a card.
Thank you, we'll, we'll work on that.
I called the number too and the person was not at all helpful.
Okay.
They don't, they don't care, they don't care.
Okay.
Yeah, they didn't care.
All right, let's forget it, one, one more question and then we're going to let Ms. Dunbar.
From that letter that lady read a few minutes ago, she said, apparently the daughter asked the lady, said, you mean, if she could only use it? She can't walk, but she'd just use a spoon? And the reply from the lady was, yeah, that's, that's it.
There's a number of people in this room, in our consumer services area that have made that note. We're following up on it. If, 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 if I was Mr. Burns or Mr. McCann, I would cringe if I heard that coming from our audience. We're, we, we understand that, we're going to follow up on it.
And it was a totally inadequate response.
I cannot agree with you more. Okay. Becky, do you have a question or two you'd like to ask?
Um, just, just a couple. And, and I, I share Director Farmer's concerns and I'm sure everybody in here's concerned about the eight hundred number that consumers would be calling. Because if that's what they need to call to make a transition over into a different plan or something, the hope is whoever they, whoever picks up the phone there would be able to guide them through that process, would know what are good options for that person who's calling. So, I certainly hope that there's some follow-up on that.
I'll, I'll take that back.
Yeah, and we're going to help you take that back.
Fair enough.
One of my questions is, do you know how many policyholders, number or percent, for each of these products had a coverage lapse after the last rate increase, were there any?
Were they, coverage lapse meaning?
They stopped paying.
Just stopped paying in, in total? I mean, I don't have, I just have the high level where we saw about two to three percent. Where, you know, for each rate increase that has been implemented, we've seen roughly two to three percent that have lapsed their coverage. And then they, they, but they will have a non-forfeiture benefit at that time.
And they will have the what?
Then they'll have their non-forfeiture benefit that, you know, Prudential went, the, the, there's a non-forfeiture, contingent non-forfeiture benefit that was part of regulation that if the rate increases were at a certain point, based on issue age and all this stuff, that you had to require the policyholder that, that lapsed due to a rate increase and at least give them a non-forfeiture benefit that was equal to the sum of the premiums they paid. Prudential went a step further where we ignore, we, we now, as of two thousand fourteen, I believe it was, we stopped ignoring what those requirements were. We said, you can have this, if you're lapsing, you can have this benefit. We're not going to, you know, wait and make sure you're the right issue age with the right rate increase or, or whatever, so.
I think Ms. Hendrick said a question.
Yes, is there a way that we could be assigned to a local Prudential agent to help us with problems? Like we have a local life insurance agent, New York Life, why couldn't we have a Prudential agent?
No, Mike.
Yeah, we can take that back, but I think that's your decision on who you retain as your consultant. It might, it might be, it doesn't even have to be a Prudential agent, it could be any financial consultant that might be able to help you with some of the decisions.
Okay. Any other questions? We've got to talk about one more question.
I'll stop there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. McCann, would you like to make any comment?
No, I just want to thank you for holding this hearing and giving us the ability to listen to the customers. It was very helpful.
Well, we certainly appreciate everybody's involvement. This is, was an interactive hearing, is the way we wanted it to be. The hearing is going to come to a close, but our consumer services people are here. And I want our consumer service, consumer services people in the company to chat about these individual instances. And so, there's some things that we'll follow up on, things that you're going to follow up on and, and, and report back. And I, I, I think that we have had a productive day. This is a tough issue for everybody in this room, including the regulator. You know, these are heartfelt, non-scripted comments that were made. And as they pointed out, this is not even the tip of the iceberg. We would have to rent out the arena over all, all the policyholders that would want to come in and say the same thing. Just because there's eight or ten of us that are saying these things, do not take that lightly. And, and, and you don't, I understand that. We do appreciate your forthrightness with your, your comments. And we look forward to following up with you on these outstanding issues and as our consumers chat with you now. So, this concludes the hearing, thank you for, everyone for coming.